Thank you for your patience. We will get started with our work session this evening, where we will be going over our all students' third grade reading art two report. This evening, what we will be having, as I have shared in previous meetings, this will be a conversation that the board is having with superintendent and team on our monitoring and where we're at in all students' third grade reading. Normally, before we have these conversations, we look at four different things to make sure that we're ready for those. And since nothing has been brought to my attention, we are ready to have this conversation. But I will quickly just go over what we look at as a board before we prepare to have those conversations. We ask, does it clearly show what is being monitored? Which we see that on this report. Does it clearly show the data for the three previous reporting periods? Does it clearly show the superintendent's evaluation, interpretation of performance relative to the goal? And does it clearly show supporting documentation that evidences that the superintendent's evaluation? If the district is not at target, or the superintendent's evaluation eradicates, implementation is not on track, does the monitoring report clearly describe any needed next steps? So those are the four things that we look at before we start our conversation. And since those four things are in place, we are ready to begin our conversation this evening on our all students' third grade reading monitoring report. For my board colleagues, we'll start, of course, we ask many of in the past questions. We will be in our who, what, and why section. We also have AJ with us, our coach, that will be intervening as needed. We are still in the process, as a board, of learning this to become an effective board. So you will hear AJ interject throughout this conversation to help kind of course correct each of us, staff and board, as we're going through this. And the purpose of us doing things in this way is that we, of course, want to get better at this to where we will just have a coach watching us that won't have to interject as we're having these conversations. But this is good practice for us as a board. So we will begin our conversation. I will open it up to you all. AJ, is there anything you wanted to say before we started our conversation? I'm hearing nothing. Or is he on mute, you said? Oh. Well, hearing nothing, we'll continue to go ahead with our conversation. I open it up for questions from my board colleagues.
On page three, looking at our kindergarten students that are meeting the target currently, what can you tell me about the strategies that are working for this population of students?
I can certainly jump in, and then we'll look to the team for anything I might miss or any specificity that they could provide. I think where you're seeing on page three, in terms of the kindergarten, you see a fairly significant jump for two reasons. One, and they're both sort of interconnected, is a collective efficacy of what we're focused on and what the priority is in terms of reading and having teachers, administrators, and central office support staff all sort of, you know, pulling from the same end of the rope, if you will, and having a tight focus on what our goals are and what we're looking to achieve. That being said, that heavy focus in those areas on the foundational block and the implementation of a comprehensive foundational block is growing in its utilization and its implementation across the system.
Just to follow up, is that, does that look different for first graders versus the other grade levels?
It doesn't look different. The skills measured in kindergarten are far fewer than they are in first, second, and third. And so as you jump in the first grade, the array of skills that we are teaching and monitoring are increased significantly.
So just to follow up on what you just said, the skills measured in first grade are greater so than in kindergarten. Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So what do you, what can you say is working? So on page four, when you mentioned that kindergartners are making larger gains than first and second, what are, what are the, I guess, strategies that are implemented? I don't think I'm asking the question correctly. What are, what are the resources available to kindergartners that might not be available to first and second graders?
I'll just add one thing right here. One thing that we've not talked about, and I think is really important, is that what we're seeing in our kindergartners is, I think, a lot due to them experiencing what we normally would have done over the last two years, those that were in pre-K and those that are in kindergarten with very few interruptions. The upper grade levels all had a pretty significant interruption, which not only requires some acceleration of progress, but also complicates the work of the teacher because the interruptions impacted students different ways, the COVID interruption I'm talking about. So I would just set that as a, I think, a basic difference between our kindergarten students and the other grades that we're measuring in this report, but.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, that, that's not an insignificant data point when you think about the pre-K and the kindergarten experiences our first and second grade students had leading up to their current school year. And so it was highly interrupted or nonexistent in many respects. And so the gaps in terms of skills for students in those grades, we've had to work really, really hard to close those gaps and teach those skills. After they missed instruction, they had interrupted instruction in that pre-K first grade year, and now they're second graders, and of course, now third graders. So that's one example, I think, of. But then maybe that's not the question that I want to, the question you're asking, if maybe that's a data point that actually contributes to that maybe. But I think I would probably answer your question, Maria, by saying that I don't know that we're teaching anything differently or that the resources are more in abundance. I think it has to do specifically based on our conversations, our interactions with staff and school leaders, that we've got a kindergarten set of students that had a more typical pre-K year going into their kindergarten year, and we're building upon those skills that students developed with a highly collaborative and sense of self-efficacy around staff, knowing where the targets are and what the science of reading looks like and feels like and sounds like with our curriculum implementation model. And we're reaping the benefits of that. Students are reaping the benefits of that earlier on.
Thank you.
I also would draw your attention to past years. We typically, and even prior to this, have seen a jump in kindergarten from fall to winter. And those are very discrete skills that you're teaching the students as part of the assessments they're going to take. So we're talking about a discrete skill as letter naming and letter sounds. So we teach those discrete skills. And when you get to first grade and second grade, you're having to take all of those skills, blending, letter naming, sight words, and put them together and read a passage fluently. And so the assessment, the set of assessments we're taking change in first grade in the winter, and you have to take all of those skills and put them together to read a passage, which kindergarten doesn't have to do. And that's something that we've worked to address over the years in first grade of that switch in the winter. But that, it's one of the reasons why you see that jump is we're teaching discrete skills, and we're able to do that in isolation. And then you're seeing it on the assessment.
In addition to staff and student absences, what are the limitations and challenges, or challenges, you have in achieving district-wide consistency of practice?
I think the challenge are still continuing to find the balance of compliance versus agency. And so there is still quite a bit of, and there should be, autonomy and decision-making at the building level. You know, principals and teacher leaders and instructional coaches are there in the moment with one another. And so they need and should have that agency to be able to make those decisions. And so we got to continue to do a better job at the central office level of providing those systems of supports and that depth of knowledge around what decisions they're making and learning from those decisions. When they work out, why did it work out? And when it didn't, why didn't it? So that's so folks continue to feel empowered and fulfilled in whatever role they serve, whether that's a teacher role, or an instructional coach role, or an associate role, or a principal role. That's a still, that's a significant way of being and way of working that we have to continue to foster and cultivate. And that's, in a system this large, that is still challenging. We're, I'm just going to, we're pretty good at it. I'm just going to say that. We're better than most, but we're not there yet. And we still got to do our due diligence to continue to improve our leadership practices and allow principals and school leaders and teacher leaders to make those decisions in the moment within, you know, the guardrails, right? We got to be able to continue to offer high-quality curriculum systemically and those opportunities to create those equitable chances. But that self-efficacy and that agency is still an area that we have to continue to grow in.
That was a great answer. I appreciate that. And I'm, and I'm just trying to clarify. And I think that's a really good point in terms of culture and independence. So how, how does a building administrator, and I'm on how, but what would it look like if a building administrator walked into a classroom? Are they expecting to see the same thing happening in every classroom? Or how do they know?
Yeah, that's a really good question. They are expecting to see curriculum delivered by grade level in a pretty close proximity of pacing of one another. And the reason, that's an example. And the reason for that is because in an ideal school year, our kindergarten teachers, for example, have the same plan period, and they're actually planning together. And they know what curriculum is being taught, and they are talking about the instructional moves that they're going to make to deliver on that curriculum and how that might work with their classroom based on their student context and their student dynamics, how that might function. They should see a lot of those same components so that when they come back together after that lesson's delivered, they say, how did this work for you? And how did it work for you? And I got, you know, great results with my students in this particular regard on this instructional design implementation. And how'd you do with yours? That's the ideal scenario that you would see as a building principal, and you would cultivate that and create opportunities for teachers to plan together, to have that time dedicated to looking at student results and talking about did students actually meet the target of the day? If so, why? If they didn't, why not? How are we going to actually intervene, you know, the very next day? So we're not waiting until the end of the year, end of the month, end of the week to intervene with students who have, we did not, who did not show mastery of gap or the learning of the skills. If that makes sense.
That consistency is also important from an equity lens. It's not exact classroom-to-classroom in one building, and it's certainly not, not exact one building to another building. But they should be relatively close. Otherwise, we're really underserving based on zip code. And that's certainly not something that we can support. So it's important to have that, to know where to be tight and loose, but to make sure that we're keeping a relatively consistent pace so that nobody's getting cheated.
And one follow-up. If a teacher were here, a teacher who has to implement this curriculum, what would be a, the kind of top two most cited barriers to success from their perspective? Time. Time to learn or time to implement?
I would say some of both. Yes. The curriculums that we have chosen, and we chose for a reason, are, you know, out of the gate, there's a lot to learn, right? They're almost professional development in themselves. So there's a lot of things to look at, and it's a lot of things to read and digest and understand, how do we now implement this for our group of students that are sitting in front of us? So there's the learning part there, but also the planning. So now I have to take this, here are my students, which scaffolds do I put in place? Which questions do I ask? Where do I think there might be a barrier for, you know, for this group of students? And how am I going to prompt and probe them to overcome that? So there's just, there's a lot. And in elementary, we're generalists. So we're also planning, you know, we're not just planning for ELA and reading and foundation block. We're planning for math. We're planning for statistics and social studies and all of the other things. So time is, is a barrier that we continue. And our leaders think very critically and very creatively around to give their teachers more time.
Technically, that was one. You got another one?
Say that one more time.
Do you have another one? That was one of them. I'm just wondering, resources like books or?
Yeah, no, I've not heard that that would be a major barrier. Doesn't mean that there's not opportunities there, but I have not heard that that's a major.
I think you would hear access to pre-K.
Pre-K?
Yeah. Their teachers, before they check, they usually can tell who's had a high-quality pre-K experience and who hasn't.
Yeah, I think another area might be, and it might go into professional learning, but support. So support for the diverse learners in their room. And that could be, you know, people support, or, or, you know, how do I? There's lots of different learning needs, right? And so how do I make sure that, and how can I build my confidence as a teacher so that I can address all the needs that I have, right? And that is through learning and engaging in conversations and collaboration. So it's still, I guess, time and learning, but for a different reason than planning. It's, how do I ensure that the student's instructional package throughout the day? What they're getting in my classroom, what they might be getting if they go to an intervention? How do I make sure that all of that is what's best for that student? So I would say that would be another area that I hear from teachers is, help me, help me, you know, to know how to do that. Because they all want to make, do the best for their students, for sure.
Yeah, and if I may, hearing, hearing Kelly speak about that, it is still related to time, but it's also, and the learning aspect of. I have heard teachers desperately wanting to support students' social-emotional needs as they come in, and the social-emotional needs of students is vast and seems like it's ever-growing. And so teachers, knowing that delivering on instructional content is significant and important, and it's what we do, and it's not the only thing that we do. We also support kids' arts and their spirits, and we do those things too. And feeling overwhelmed with all of that is definitely a barrier. So it's connected to the time piece, and it's also connected to the resources.
And I could probably think of one more. It would be not, like, ensuring that we're taking things off their plate if we're putting these things on. So again, related to the time that it takes, but also just the, what's in their scope and what's in their circle of influence and control? Like, what are we taking off as we add other things? Or what are we prioritizing for them and ensuring that they are able to meet those expectations?
Well, and permitting themselves not to be perfect. I mean, if you think in a teacher's world, they want to be the best they can be for their students now. And with these, the two curriculums that we have, time, everything you've heard takes time to build. And what we've always done maybe came and was comfortable, but now in the uncomfortableness, are we allowing, or are they permitting themselves to not be in a perfect mode? So that's where the time comes, the support comes, and really working them through understanding that they're getting better every day. And it may not go well, but what do they reflect on? How do they lean into their PLC? How do they lean into their teaching partners, into their coaches in order to grow and support themselves and their students?
So if you look at the data, kind of year over year, just on page one, on the all-third grade meeting fast benchmark, I mean, actually, despite this third grade group losing two years of instruction, you made the most, you know, they made, and your team made the most significant fall/winter gains, I guess, close to 1920, but about right on par, right? So we talk a lot about the learning loss and all those things. So what would you attribute that to? Because especially, I mean, you look back at 1617, 1718, I mean, 1819 was a loss even, right? So what do you attribute that to despite the COVID learning loss that you overcame?
I think the, these third graders had a little bit more time in learning than previous years. All right, and so getting my COVID years all confused. So they had their, they had more time in actual schools than the first and second graders did leading into this school year. So what, and what that equates to is more time in the curriculum, more time in access to the high-quality teachers and high-quality instruction that they're providing. So their, their time engaged in the learning and in the learning design is more significant, is more pronounced. And I think you're seeing that in that dataset. Maybe as I'm talking out loud, right, this idea that we've got a really good quality, high-quality core of teachers. And when our teachers are with them, our students reap the benefit. And so that's what is evident here.
So they had that stronger foundation, having been that full year of kindergarten, right? So they got some of that foundational, which we're seeing. We talked about that in our last report when we talked about, you know, these, those, these third graders had that foundation from kindergarten that we could build a little bit on in first grade, in the virtual, you know, we built on it in first grade, they went out, and then in second grade, at least, we had that to build on, whereas our second graders and first graders had more of an interruption. So I think that's, that's, that's one of the things. And I'd also say we've really focused this year on third grade, which in past years, I wouldn't say we didn't focus on third grade, but we kept, we spent a lot of attention on first grade and trying to overcome some of the struggles we have from fall to winter. But we made a conscious effort across with our building leaders and ourselves, let's focus on third grade. Let's make this board goal. And I feel like that also attributes.
Looking at pages three and four, and I know Kim had asked a question on page three about the kindergartners, and they have met their target with the first and the second graders, and even looking at like individual school status. You know, we had 13 out of 38 who met the first grade target, 10 out of 38 who met the second grade target. Couple different questions in here. One, what can you tell us about, is there something different within the environments of the schools that are able to meet those targets for the schools that maybe haven't quite met their targets? Are there underlying causes that we should be addressing or should be thinking about in this process?
Yeah, I can start with that. I think the, it's not a one-to-one correlation, but we are seeing that, two things, as you would imagine, possibly, in terms of the implementation, the higher fidelity of the implementation, the greater the gains that we see. And while they may not be at target, they're showing significant growth towards the target. So they may not be counted in the 13 that met, but they're growing. So the other thing is too, is that, and you'll see it in the data, there's still an access issue systemically when it comes to our students who are that are multilingual learners, as well as our students with IEPs. And so the access being how much time and core instruction and standard-based instruction and learning students are getting. And so we are doing some significant in time investment in what does that look like systemically for us in terms at the district level and supportive schools to see that across, that shift in that across all schools with a hyper-focus around the unique learning needs of students in class and monitoring the minutes in instruction, looking at that opportunity for students to not have their core, their foundational skills, or their all-block be interrupted for whatever reason, right? It doesn't matter what the reason. If it's interrupted, if they miss it, that is, that's learning missed in the moment. And that adds up day after day after day after day. And so looking at how we systemically create practices and policies and administrative moves that look for those types of mislearning opportunities that we can make adjustments for.
So a quick follow-up to, you mentioned those that are implementing with higher fidelity have greater gains. So what may, what might you be doing to help encourage and support other buildings to reach towards that, that level of, that higher level of fidelity?
A couple of things. One is that continuing to operate from a stance of coaching and support with a higher intensity, right? And so we've got principal supervisors and central office support team members that spend additional time in those buildings, coaching and support, and helping to create that sense of efficacy and that agency to make decisions in the moment and strategic decisions for the duration of the semester and the duration of the school year. So again, because what we need to be able to do is continue, as a teaching organization, is to continue to teach leaders and listen to leaders about what their challenges are and support them in their decision-making around how to overcome that challenge in a very collaborative manner with their leadership teams. And so the easiest, the wrong thing to do, but the easiest thing to do would be to walk in and start telling folks what to do differently and then walk out. That would be very easy, and it would be completely wrong. Our job is to continue to teach and support and lift up opportunities for learning for administrators to, again, instill that culture of agency, of decision-making, and empowerment, and have that be the culture by which all staff members show up to every day to know that it's, we're not striving for perfection. We're striving for continuous improvement and, and learning. And that, that's the ultimate goal for us. So in the buildings where it's taken off, they've found that niche. They've found that, that leadership groove, that collective, you know, agency and efficacy in their leadership teams, and those systems are actually at work each and every day to account for that. And so it creates resiliency in teams, and it creates higher retention rates in teams. And so those are data points that we need to continue to lift up to leaders around. These are things that we need to continue to look at and monitor for.
I also think we could, we know that COVID impacted different student groups or different people groups differently, right? So if you look at, many of these schools are making growth, and they're trending upward in first grade and second grade, but they may have larger populations of some of the groups we're talking about. And we know that our younger students had the, you know, the most negative impact. So if you put those together, if you have a large multilingual population or a large population of black males, like, we know that nationwide, that COVID impacted those people groups differently. So you're putting that together. It might take them more than the year or the two years. But we are trending upward in, in most all of our schools, and many schools have come close to making this goal, and we're trying to support them in different ways, just like we talked about, supporting individual students. We're supporting individual schools based on where they are and where their data is, and that might look different.
And I'll add one more thing, Kelly, which is the impact of staff absences. So this was winter data, and at that point, staff absences were really quite problematic at the school level, and they weren't problematic equally. So some schools had a greater detrimental impact of staff absences and unfilled vacancies. And so on page 10, there's a little bit of additional information about that. But I would say that, that's another piece that impacts this data too, which looked at differently is, one could say, it's incredible the progress we made given how devastating staff attendance was at that point because of COVID with adults.
Right. And so if you think about that staff absence, as many of the support staff that support the students were, we were, I was just speaking of, were subbing in classrooms, you know, or many of our district staff that support those schools that we were just speaking of were subbing in classrooms, right? So I think all of that, you have to put it together to, to paint the picture.
And where we see our schools, as well as when they identify the individual needs and when you see some schools that implement at a higher level, maybe they weren't impacted as much with absences, but then also when schools are starting to identify where their specific areas are, when we go into buildings with our network partners and we're walking classrooms and working with leadership teams and, and coaching them, the schools are identifying where their need areas are because the leadership teams there, the coaches and, and, and the assistant principals and the principals are there, they're identifying where their specific needs are because they're there every day. And they're coming to us with ultimate vulnerability, saying this is what we need, can you focus on this? We go in and focus specifically on a targeted, maybe a targeted aspect, is it all block or is it a specific, specific component of, of the literacy, every EL or IM? We go in, we, we observe, we come back, we coach, we look at specific actions we can take, implementation, then we move on for monitoring and how's that going to look? So when we see schools making that growth, it, it's truly through their work within the building and working with their teachers, their PLC leads and professional development that happens at our district level. I mean, there's a total through line between what the coaches receive to what the PLC leads get and how that impacts what happens within the schools. And, and when we can go in and have these conversations and really go and look specifically for certain areas and then come back and have those, and we know the leaders are going to implement and monitor that, that's where we're starting to see our schools, maybe they may, may not have made all the growth there, but they're, they're taking so many steps forward in their implementation there.
Kelly, you mentioned that, that the third grade numbers and success were attributed to focus and, and really putting energy there. What could that look like? What could that look like if that amount of focus or like, how could we replicate that to make it across more than just our third graders? Like, how can we? What, what can we do? Someone help me, please.
I feel like we continue what we're doing. We really, because of, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I guess I was, here is the question. What resources did you put into the third grade group that would be this extra level of focus that we could expand upon to make that same level of impact in more grades?
So the focus was really on working with our leaders. When I say focus, we said, we, we, this is a third grade goal. In many years past, we've thought about K2 and all the things we're doing because we lumped K2 together and what we're doing around early literacy. But this year, we said, okay, we cannot kind of forget about our third graders, this is a third grade goal. So it was looking at their data specifically and working with leaders together to look at students' trend lines and aim lines. Who's, who's trending upward? Who's going to make this? And then how do we ensure that we move students from winter to spring, right? So looking at, and from fall to winter. So we're looking at, here's where they're in the fall, what do we need to do for these individual students to move them to winter? So it's looking at student by student. So we just do that same thing and, and it's already happening in the buildings because we focused on third grade and really as a, and focused on it as a district versus, so we focused on how do we make our district goal and how do you, how does each school help us make this district goal? Right? So you go back to your school then and say, okay, this is how many students we need to make our district goal. What does that mean for the classroom and what does that mean for the student? So what we're seeing is schools going back and, and, and building that same community or that same collective efficacy around that. And it's going all the way to, okay, parent, how do you help us make our school goals so we can make our district goal? So that is already trickling down to all the grade levels because we sort of focused on it in this one. So we're already, you know, talking to leaders that have done that same thing in their second grade and their first grade. And I feel like that will continue into next year, just.
What I would add to that is what we also did was not add anything else in that we kept the focus on literacy and systems of improvement that address students' health and wellbeing, the community engagement, the welcoming, and making sure that students still valued and safe and exactly that they can be the person that they were created to be in that environment, and that's exactly who we want them to be, and all of those aspects that come with that. Because it is important that one of the most innovative opportunities that we have in front of us is not to go down some other direction and, and change course of action for school leaders who are now buying in and invested in what we're doing, being disciplined to the, to the path that we've set and make tweaks and adjustments along the way when we see it's not working. And then we continue to, in that continuous improvement process. That's, that's a significant factor for us. That fatigue initiative, I believe, is, is the phrase that gets tossed around, that, that was a thing for DMPS for many, many years. And it, it shouldn't, it, we should hear that far less in the years to come.
We can shift into how future, knowing that if you do go back into the what and why questions, that's okay, but we can shift into our futures or anyhow questions that you might have.
If I could go back. Sorry. Um, I, let me find it here, sorry. I wish I would have it, I wish I had, oh, good, there's a printout right here. I think it's page six possibly. That's a being, it's a progress monitoring and maybe it's not page six, let me see. Maybe I'm thinking of a question, oh, page five, sorry, bottom of page five. So our first graders were, I mean, looking at where we should be or where a benchmark is for those that are not meeting benchmarks who are progress monitored. We are at 73.4%, hoping to be at 100. What can you tell me? We were a little bit closer with second grade and third grade, but what can you tell me that's going on with that population that we're a little, we're below target on that?
Did you say that you're on page?
Oh, sorry, page five, the bottom of page five, yes.
So one thing is, we, we only measure those in fall and spring, so that was from fall, because it's, right, so it's the period between there. But, um, so it's a, the only progress measure that we use in second and third grade as a, as a grade level is CBM reading. So it's that automaticity, you know, fluency passage. In first grade, we, the CBM reading is the grade level progress measure. But many times, if we're needing to progress monitor a student, we're drilling down to a discrete skill, like I talked about before. It might be letter naming, it might be blending, it might be sight words. And so these students, the 70, the other percentage of students, 27% of students, might, might be getting progress monitored on a different measure.
It's just not grade level.
But it's not at great, it's not the grade level that we're using for this report. So what we're trying to, to do is to really work around that intervention system, and we're moving into that more with our schools and our interventionists to, to, to realize or to understand the idea of progress monitoring being, yes, you're going to progress monitor what you're intervening on. So if you're doing a sight word intervention or a blending intervention, you're going to progress monitor on that. But you also need to progress monitor once a month on the CBM to tell us how we're doing, right? To get to grade level. And time is, it's time, it's time when our data, when we have so many students that we need to, to progress monitor, and, and that might be a class-wide intervention, but class-wide intervention, we're still having to progress monitor them. So many times they're making decisions, do I give up instruction to do more progress monitoring? Or do I do the progress monitoring that's going to inform me if my intervention is working towards grade level? So there's lots of different reasons that that continues to be low year after year. So, and then also, if we look at just progress monitoring, a student is not the intervention and is not an actual indicator if we're going to make that, that our goal.
So I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. You're saying that what we measure in progress monitoring, that that not, that will not necessarily be an indicator for us to achieve our third grade goal, but yet we have it as an interim goal, correct?
Yes.
Right, as of right now? Okay. How will DMPS investments in, I'm reading through the, the levers in the community engagement and community building, the 21st century after-school program, I think about Metro Kids, like any of the DMPS-aligned programs? How will, how are you or how will you align learning from school to out-of-school time or school to Metro Kids? I'm not sure if Metro Kids actually has an academic component, but talk about how you're using those vehicles to strengthen goal accomplishment.
Yeah, the, many of those vehicles, that after-school time or out-of-school time, if you will, the traditional school bell-to-bell schedule is built to attract students into a structured environment whereby we're, we're pouring into that, that, that efficacy and that agency of students, right? That, that health and wellbeing and the community aspect of that. There is absolutely the literacy component that is tied to, sorry, hit the microphone, that is tied to that, but that's actually not the draw. The draw is, I'm going to be present after school to be cared for and taken care of and, and be given opportunities beyond the school day to continue my joy and, and to find that, again, that agency. And yes, there's a literacy component attached to that and assigned to that, and we have to continue to drill into that, but it's not the draw afterwards.
How can the board help?
I think in our notes, we even.
We do. I'll, I'll lift up one thing, which is just doubling down on something Matt said earlier, and that is, I'm operating in a way that we can stay focused, that we can stay focused so school leaders can stay focused, so teachers and the rest of the staff can stay focused, that, that helps us.
And I think, I was reading, so I wasn't really listening to Tim, but I believe what he may have been saying, and maybe I'll just double down on, was the, there's so many things that are happening right now in our community, in our society, that are all important. And these are, these are important areas of discussion and opportunity for us to continue to grow together in service of one another as a staff and as, and as a community. And we have to continue to focus on literacy and maintain our, our, our sort of agency, I keep, I think I've used that word 12 times tonight, our own agency of being empowered to make decisions collectively as, as a team, as a team, a board and, and, and central office and school-based leaders, to continue to see that the strategies and the inputs that are being poured into teachers and students and families are the right inputs. And we may have to make adjustments and tweaks along the way, but they're, they're, they're right. And we're, we're starting to see the system improve, the health of the system is beginning to react to these inputs. And that's a, that's an exciting time and also a time to stay very, very disciplined.
I just want to say, I really appreciate you calling out the healthy tension between compliance and agency because I know, I'm sure others have heard this too, when you're talking to teachers who want some level of creativity and autonomy and independence, it's really hard to balance that with trying to drive a very specific set of curriculum down people's throat. So it's a, it's a healthy tension and I appreciate you stating that and calling that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I give good wait time, so I'm just waiting to make sure that I don't jump in and someone else has a question. AJ, would you like to add anything? Our monitoring conversation is coming towards an end. I believe we've asked our questions this evening.
No, actually, it's been a pretty smooth evening so far. Just really appreciate the amount of homework board members have done to prepare for this and the work that the administration has put into getting ready for these conversations. It's exciting to see this process continue to come along and develop.
Well, for this monitoring report, we won't be voting on it this evening. It will be put on consent, and so it will be on the, the next agenda. So we have nothing else. We will be done with our work session this evening. Thank you all. Thank you, staff. Thank you, board.
Thank you all.
Thank you.